Oh, she already thought. Oh, I can't.
It's kind of like Mr.
Okay. We all know. This is. Okay.
I don't know.
It didn't work.
Why did you do that, Eloy?
You know what? I thought she requested avenue.
Council meeting of September twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Write it over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Yes, Mayor Quorm is present for the City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority and Joint Powers Authority.
Public comment. Any person who wants to address the City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority, Finance Authority, Parking Authority, or the JPA on any item on the agenda may do so at this time, three minutes.
One speaker, Mayor.
All right.
Okay, so this is about the this week's agenda. I'm hoping we get clarification on the GAN amendments under DR one.
All right, we'll do one thing. Could you push your microphone up a little bit because we can barely hear you?
Okay.
There we go.
I hope we get an explanation from the Finance Department on the GAN amendment under DR one. Last year, we didn't get an explanation of what that is and how you come up with those figures. Under DR two, I think you mentioned last week you were going to reallocate money to open up the Morningside Park Library, so hopefully that's inside of there. DR four is on the CARES Act funding. The staff report shows you only gave out a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, but the city took money out of the reserves to fund it, to give people more money. So unclear as to why there was such a low amount given in the rent relief with the meeting minutes. Just wanted clarification that any comments that are emailed to the city clerk, that they are included with the amendments that are being approved.
Oh, thank you, Melissa. You know, I have the wrong book, you guys.
He has the wrong book.
Okay. Okay, that ends public comment. Mr. City Manager, why don't you answer the question about the low allocation?
Yeah, the CARES Act funding is based on owners of apartment buildings and tenants coming forward, and we just not, we have not had the turnout and applications submitted beyond that. So we're processing them as we get them, but the response has not been as great as we thought it would be.
And that's why we have it, because we can't allocate what we don't have a ballot use for. All right, thank you very much. With that, we'll close public comment. Item one, CSA one and H one.
Want register. Did you, did you want to do the proclamation recognizing breast cancer awareness?
I will, you know, I should do that.
It's up to you, Mayor, I just want to make sure.
Well, no, do, do item one, CSA one and H one.
Yes, sir, okay. Want register?
Move loud, please.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Council members, successor agency members, and housing authority members, Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Chairman Buds.
Aye. Okay, I have two duties to do. The first is a proclamation for breast cancer awareness month in October, whereas breast cancer remains the second most common form of cancer overall and the second cause of death, cancer death overall among American women, according to the American Cancer Society, and whereas although rare, men can be diagnosed with breast cancer as well. In twenty twenty-one, an estimated two thousand six hundred and fifty men will be diagnosed with breast cancer, and whereas, according to the National Breast Cancer Foundation, one in eight women in the United States will develop breast cancer in her lifetime, and whereas an estimated forty-two thousand one hundred and seventy women in the United States will lose their lives every year from breast cancer, and whereas on average, every two minutes, a woman is diagnosed with breast cancer in the United States of America. And whereas in twenty twenty, an estimated two hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred and eighty new cases of invasive breast cancer were diagnosed in women in the United States, as well as forty-eight thousand five hundred and thirty new cases of non-invasive, in situ, breast cancer, and whereas currently there are three point five million breast cancer survivors in the U.S., including women still being treated and those that have completed treatment from age fifty to seventy-four. Now therefore be it known, the mayor and council members of the city of Inglewood, California, to hereby proclaim October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month presented the twentieth, twenty-eighth day of September twenty twenty-one. And now, we have a special task. We have a thirty-seven-year employee that is retiring, and Senator Bradford from the California State Senate is here to read his proclamation.
Come here, please, come up.
You can walk in here, because you've been given the clearance.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. It's truly an honor to be here today to recognize the works of an amazing city employee, an individual who has spent over three decades of their life, just short of four decades, serving the city of Inglewood, but more importantly, the people of Inglewood. An individual since my involvement in this community, almost thirty years now, has always greeted you with a warm smile and an infectious can-do attitude. She's never had a bad day, and so I'm honored to recognize her work, and I know in its spirit that was instilled in her by her parents and her late father, who was the right-hand man to everybody who's ever been elected in this city and beyond. So I just want, on behalf of the thirty-fifth Senate District, state of California, on behalf of the thirty-fifth district, I'm proud to present this proclamation in recognition of thirty-seven-plus years of exemplary service to the city of Inglewood, and for, like I say, almost four decades, you have flourished as a beacon of light, a role model, and a leader. Your hard work and dedication and effective and efficiency service to the city officials, constituents, and the general public has been exemplified through your strength, your resilience, and exemplified, now that's, I wonder why that's there twice, but best wishes on behalf of the thirty-fifth Senate District, the million people that I represent, and I'm proud to call you a friend. Congratulations.
Can I get it off?
In the pool?
There we go.
Again, you've had clearance. Hannah's standing, Carlos?
Okay. Your mask, Councilwoman.
Okay, before I.
Oh, oh, let's take another one. She didn't have it all the way off.
Oh.
Oh. Heather didn't have a mask.
Yeah, and I think it was your fault.
Uh-oh.
All the way back.
Okay, so before we read our special commendation from the city of Inglewood, which, unlike the state, unlike the federal government, is on wood.
Uh-oh.
We will go around, and I'd like the council members to take maybe a minute if they chose to, to give Kathy her best wishes. Councilman Dodson, District one.
Oh, I would love to give Kathy my best wishes. I want you to really enjoy your retirement. You've deserved this. You've worked very hard for a long time. You've given us the best of you, and we are trying to give you the best of us. So take that with you. Love you and love your family. Take care.
Thank you, Councilman Padilla, District two.
Thank you, Mayor, and Kathy, you know, what can we say other than we wish you nothing but love, happiness in your retirement? Enjoy your grandson. That's, you know, I mean, look, thank you is not even enough for all you've done for each and every one of us, and I can just tell you for myself, then when I first met you, and to this day, you've always been so positive, you've always had a smile, you've always been a true person that cares about people, and you're going to be missed, but we wish you nothing but the best. Every day is a Saturday. Enjoy yourself.
Councilwoman Falk, District four.
Thank you, Mayor. Kathy, I haven't even been here a year, but I will tell you that I feel like I was immediately drawn to your beautiful spirit. You are beautiful inside and out, and I will always appreciate the kindness that you've shown to me, coming on board as Councilwoman. I wish you the very, very best, and I hope you have lots of enjoyable moments in retirement.
Thank you, Councilman Morales, District three.
Thank you, and, and we all got a chance to say something in the back there, and then me and you had our moment over there, Kathy, so I know this is something that we're sharing with the public, and it's, it's important because I didn't get a chance to say either back there or over here how special your whole family has been. I mean, you live in my district, your family lives in my district, and your father was a good friend, and I'll tell you that he was also really just a good man, and you know, the way I would see him speak so highly of you and you of him, I mean, it was a beautiful thing, and, and I'll tell you that what he brought to this city was just this sense of, of good, integrity, honor, everything else that you carry on every day. I mentioned back there, you know, how much you, you became this person we all trusted with everything, with everything, and you just can't say enough about those things. I'm going to miss you just not having you. You make us look good every day, you know, when you're out there, and that's just the kind of person you are. I doubt when I retire, people will say all those nice things that they said back there about you, but it was nice to see it done for you. Okay, so good luck, and we'll be in touch, all right? We love you.
Well, Kathy, I've had the, the opportunity to work for three different cities, for Inglewood, Santa Monica, the city of Los Angeles. I've been in this business for fifty years. I've had some great assistants. There is, they've all been good, some have been great, none as great as you. The standards that you set for customer service are applauded with everyone that comes to the ninth floor, because you've, we recruited well, but you've trained well, and the kind of goodness in you comes from someone with great parents. I know your mother and father, knew your father very well, and I promised him something, I kept my word. You were in a position to give me the gift of time. And I'll never forget that. So one of the gifts that I gave Kathy was a Michelle Watch, so that, show them, Kathy, so that every time she would look at it, she would remember how precious each second is. We will miss you. It's your time to be with your mom, your grandchildren. You enjoy yourself, but you will always be remembered here. And so obligatorily, I have to read this. Whereas your journey in local government began as a proud sentinel of Inglewood High School thirty-seven years ago, and whereas one of the most quintessential, who wrote this? Who wrote quintessential? It's a great word. You must have written this. Oh. It was chima. Quintessential contributions to a community is a selfless act of service, and whereas the role of a public servant requires being responsible for the welfare of their constituency while securing their trust, that each and every action taken is in the best interest of the whole. And whereas throughout her tenure, Kathy has served as an example and mentor in what it truly means to be a selfless public servant, which is often a thankless and underappreciated assignment. And whereas for over thirty-seven years, Kathy is known for her dependability, sweet demeanor, and genuinely, genuinely kind spirit, has flourished in that role by being a beacon of light, positivity, and professionalism, and whereas Kathy's dedication to the city, as well as how to effectively and efficiently serve city officials, constituents, and the general public, has been illustrated every day by example. Those lessons have impacted and blessed past and current city employees, and will serve as a standard for future generations. And whereas Kathy has represented the city of Inglewood with character, integrity, humility, and optimism, and it is without a doubt that the love and gratitude the city has for Kathy is deep and is infinite. And whereas although Kathy's assignment for City Hall is ending, we recognize that this is merely the beginning of a new chapter for an undeniably amazing woman, and whereas a legacy Kathy leaves behind will only strengthen our future stars in municipal service. We as a city and a family can only anticipate the harvest we will reap from the seeds of hope, peace, love, professionalism, gratitude, graciousness, and understanding that Kathy has planted for well over three decades. And whereas the city of Inglewood honors Kathy not only for her years of service, but also for being one of the most beautiful human beings inside and out, we thank you. We thank you for blessing us with your calm and kind presence, and because of you, Inglewood is stronger. Now therefore be it known and be forever resolved that the mayor and council members, the City Hall family, and the city of Inglewood residents to hereby salute, commend, and honor, and thank Kathy Givens for thirty-seven years of exemplary service. Thank you for being the ideal team member in helping to propel the city forward. Kathy, may your next chapter be an even, even bigger blessing to you as you have been to the beautiful city of Inglewood. We commend you for a job well done, presented this twenty-eighth day of September. The Mayor and City Council.
Mayor Buds. This is more than. Okay, okay. Let's do it right here. Let's do it right here. Okay, move the chairs.
Move the chairs back.
You know, you, you like. Good job, bro. We're taking drugs. You, you, you calling audibles and everything? Okay, so, so we, we have a street sign for Kathy.
Love it, looks great.
We're going to mount it for one week on Revilla behind City Hall. And then, and then we will give it to her.
Thank you.
There you go, there you go, there you go. There you go, there you go, there you go, Dr. Consent calendar. Items two through ten.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Council members, Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye. DR one.
Staff report recommending adoption of a resolution establishing the city's tax-supported appropriations limitation for fiscal year twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two as required by the GAN amendment to the California Constitution.
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Council members, Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye. This GAN amendment resolution is required by the California Constitution. Ms. Buchanan, if you'd take like thirty-five seconds and explain why this is a perfunctory measure that we take.
Yes, so the GAN applies to all funds using a calculation method provided by the state of California that places a limit on the amount of proceeds of taxes that the state and local agencies can appropriate each year, is based on their spending caps. So the calculation is based on the operating budget and factors provided by the state to determine an annual limit known as the GAN appropriation limit, and depending on the factors, the limit is adjusted annually to determine how much we as a city can spend, spend in terms of these finance proceeds.
Thank you, it accomplishes two things. It, one, it ensures the public and that we're in compliance with the California state constitution and we don't exceed our limits.
That is correct.
And two, it gives a sense of where we are in relation to the GAN amendments limits, is that right?
That is correct.
Thank you very much. So this isn't something that we do because there's a problem, is we do it to be in compliance with the law. Okay, DR two.
Staff report recommending adoption of a resolution approving and adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two annual budget.
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, before you do that, let me see, no, I guess we were going to handle it a different way. Madam City Clerk, call the roll.
Yes, Mayor. Council members, Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye, DR three.
Staff report recommending adoption of a resolution supporting the proposed initiative measure tentatively entitled the California Sports Raging and Consumer Protection Act as amendment.
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Council members, Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye. DR four.
Staff report recommending adoption of a resolution accepting CARES Act CDBG dash CV round three funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in the amount of one million, thirty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Council members, Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye, A one.
Thank you, Mayor, no oral reports from the city attorney's office.
CM one.
Thank you, Mayor, no oral reports from the city manager's office.
CC two.
Get, can I do?
CC one.
Yes, Mayor, thank you so much. Today is National Voter Registration Day, and so I just want everyone to know that I did a little PSA, one-minute brief PSA about National Voter Registration Day. It was created in two, in two thousand and twelve to raise awareness about the importance of voting. You know, many find themselves unable to vote due to registration card deadlines or outdated voter registration cards, but today you don't have to worry about that kind of stuff. You can actually go to the polls on, on election day and register at the same time and also cast your, your ballot. So, you know, National Voter Registration Day was created to bring that awareness. Also, on last Thursday, my deputy and I, we attended the Zoom conference with Michelle Obama. Speakers included Regina Hall, Chris Paul, and the WNBA player Elizabeth Williams. That was also great. Today is National Sons' Day, so I want to wish my amazing son Quentin Thompson, once he sees this, when he gets older, a happy National Sons' Day, and also to my awesome and also talented godson, Justin Allen, and last but not least, Ms. Kathy Givens. She has been such a pleasure to work with. I've been working with her for sixteen years, and she's been nothing but kind, nothing but great, and I want, I want to wish her the best. Thank you, Mayor, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, CC two.
Monthly treasures report for the month ending July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Receive and file, CSA two.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on June fifteenth, June twenty-second, June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Successor agency members, Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Buds.
Aye, CSA three.
Monthly treasures report for the month ending July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Receive and file, during the successor agency, the housing authority is in session, H two.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on June fifteenth, June twenty-second, June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Housing authority members, Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Buds.
Aye. Uh, let's see. We're during the successor agency.
H, H three.
We're on, we're H two.
H three.
H three, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Monthly treasure report for the month ending July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Receive and file, H four.
Staff report recommending adoption of a resolution accepting three million, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, fifty-two dollars for housing choice voucher funding for the section eight HCV program from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Housing authority members, Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Buds.
Aye. During the housing authority, JPA one.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Joint Powers Authority members, Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Buds.
Aye, JPA two.
Monthly treasures report for the month ending July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Move approval?
No, no, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Receive and, receive and file. Receiving, receiving file. Adjourned the JPA. Uh, no appointments to boards, commissions, committees. Public comment regarding other matters. Any persons wishing to address the council on any matter connected with city business, not elsewhere, considerate may do so at this time. One minute.
We have three public speakers, Mayor.
Want to say thank you, Mayor Buzz, for answering my questions. Last, uh, comment is, we read in Daily Breeze that the city has received, um, half of the apportionment of the Biden Recovery Act money, and we've also seen in the news that the Clippers has closed the deal on the land. How do those funds factor into the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget?
That's an excellent question. First of all, the, the monies that were received, um, regarding the Clippers' purchase of the land, uh, go to FAA and LAWA because those, those, uh, parcels were purchased with grant money, so they don't come to the city. As it pertains to the CARES Act, we have not received final guidance as to how those funds can be used, and so we will not be using them until we receive final authority on how we can spend them. So you can't consider money in a budget that you have no authority to spend. Well, we're, this isn't a back and forth, but you could say thank you.
I was waiting for you to finish. Thank you.
All right. You, you're very, you're very welcome. Uh, next speaker.
I am Ray Holler, trustee for our family trust, which owns a house on one hundred eighteenth Street near Yukon Avenue, a house my parents bought new in nineteen fifty. So our family has been homeowners in the city of Inglewood for over seventy years. That's in cou- city council district four, parking zone eleven. Honorable Mayor and City Council, thank you for all you have done to improve the city of Inglewood over the past decade, including renovating the Forum, building SoFi Stadium, bringing the Rams and Chargers. I am a Charger season ticket holder. YouTube Theater and Clippers Arena. However, there are many problems associated with SoFi Stadium, especially with the residential parking permit program, to the point where eighty residents attended last week's Parking and Traffic Commission meeting to report those problems in person. Please get a report from the commission who graciously heard our complaints. Thank you so much. My time is up.
Okay, thank, what was your name, sir?
Ray Holler.
Okay, Mr. Palmer. So, so let, let me tell you this. This is a very big program, and it, it has a lot of impacts, and we had no reason to believe there wouldn't be things to iron out. However, this program is meant to address more than just the issue of, um, fans parking in neighborhoods. It's meant to address a long-term, chronic, street shortage of parking in neighborhoods, particularly when you have, uh, some residents that have seven, eight cars in their household, decide to park some cars around the corner, decide to park a car and take up two spaces at the curb to keep those two spaces for family members when they return home. When you think about it, um, every residence has, can park about three cars in the driveway, two in the garage. However, a lot of people use their garages for storage. Okay. Uh, and so having a program that allows you two cor- two spaces at the curb, in addition to the five spaces that you should have at your residence, should be enough. However, you know, people are used to using curb parking as free parking spaces for whatever they want, and so this is something to get adjusted to. That being said, there are some things about the program that need to be looked at, and we hear you, uh, we heard the people that came, and will be adjusting the program as needed. So thank you very much for your comments. With that, we'll close public comment.
One more.
Oh, no. I'm sorry, the most important guy is coming up here.
Yes, the most important guest. Hi, Mayor and, uh, council members. Uh, my name's Pablo, District Four, and, uh, yeah, the parking's a hot topic here with the, uh, permits, and, uh, it has been a chronic issue, and I will be the one to say that, uh, you know, I myself have been, uh, to blame as well, you know, uh, I believe, uh, people have multiple cars, like you were just mentioning, because, uh, they have no room in District Four, Eight, Four, that's my area, and, uh, people will strategically park their cars where maybe two cars can fit, but, you know, when they go to work and then come back, they'll push the car forward or backwards, and they basically have, uh, parking, uh, available for them, uh, twenty-four, seven. So that, that's the issue. I'm saying, I, I've been at fault at this, and, uh, I propose that we actually need to increase, uh, parking on both sides to open up, one of the sides, cut half the grass, so we can have parking on both sides of the streets, uh, just like our neighbor to the west of us, Lennox, which they have the same exact width of streets, and they park on both sides. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Pablo. Appreciate it. Are there any other public comments? Okay, with that, we'll close public comment, and we'll go to, uh, the mayor and council remarks. Councilman Dotson, District One.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as my friend would say, we had a great event here in the beautiful city of Inglewood called the Golden Shovel NFL event. The mayor, Councilwoman Falk, and I attended the passing of the Golden Shovel to the city of Inglewood. You can't even imagine what I felt like when I watched the NFL pass that shovel onto Mayor Buzz. For me, that was a significant, a significant event. This is congratulations to us for the Super Bowl, and not only did they do that, they brought fifty-six, fifty-six trees to be planted in Edwin Vincent Park. And what was amazing to me, they had enough volunteers to do it. We had over a hundred and forty-some people out there to help volunteer to plant those trees. So hats off to Inglewood and the citizens of Inglewood. We showed them that we are, we're all right, and we were waiting for Tampa Bay to come with the shovel. With that.
And then we beat them like a drum.
That's right. With that, thank you so much. You guys have a wonderful day, and before I forget, congratulations to Kathy for being a light, a beacon on this night long for thirty-seven years. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Councilman Padilla, District Two.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, I just want to say that, uh, last, uh, last Wednesday, I did the etch and catch with the catalytic converters, and I want to thank all the community members that came out to support that. We were trying to get, you know, forty cars done. It was our first time. We did it on a weekday because we didn't know what to expect, and I want to thank, uh, Sabrina Barnes, all your staff at Rogers Park, uh, Brian, uh, they all came through to help us out. It was a huge success. We, we went way over the forty cars, and we're gonna be doing another one in a future date, and it'll be on a Saturday, uh, so we can capture more of our residents. But again, uh, hats off to, uh, Inglewood Tow Company, Moshe, uh, the owner, to, uh, Chief Franarada and the men and women of the Inglewood Police Department, they came to help us out as well. Uh, you know, today, you know, you look at the CARES Act that we approved the funding, uh, you know, receiving the CDBG funds, uh, a million thirty-five thousand dollars to help our community out with those funds. Uh, you look at our housing vouchers, three-point-two million dollars in those vouchers to help Inglewood families, uh, with their housing needs. You know, so, so many times, right now, we, we, we hear folks talk about traffic, and there's traffic of the stadium, and, and we discussed it last week. Not, not all traffic is bad traffic. It's good to have traffic in a community, especially one like ours, where we have so many neighborhoods and residents and, and businesses that benefit from, uh, this traffic in, in so many ways besides the, the businesses, but also the revenue that we get from these events, you know, help us substantially. And then they always talk about, you know, we need to provide more housing, we need to do this for housing, you know, that always becomes a big point, and you look at the stuff that, that staff has been doing, reaching out, you know, what we've been doing here on the dais to make these things happen, and we do it all because we care about our community and our residents, you know, so, uh, hats off to, to all our staff for everything they do every day. And with that, I, I too want to wish Kathy, um, I mean, enjoy it, man. She's, she's retiring. What's there not to enjoy? She's got a one-year-old grandson, uh, so she gets to, to go enjoy every day being a Saturday, like I said, and to be with her family and with her grandchild. So Kathy, thank you, thank you, thank you for thirty-seven wonderful years. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Falk, District Four.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to start off by, um, saying that I, I joined the mayor and Councilman Dotson at the passing of the Golden Shovel on Saturday. It was a great event and, um, a lot of energy and enthusiasm with all the positive, uh, things happening here in Inglewood, and there were so many wonderful volunteers and, um, uh, great participation. So it was, it was nice, and I'm glad that I was able to join you in your district, Councilman Dotson. And, uh, also, I want to say, jobs, jobs, jobs. So the Inglewood Basketball and Entertainment Center, uh, is having a construction career fair, so for all of our interested residents, uh, the career fair is happening this Thursday, September thirtieth, and it's at ten AM, and the address is, uh, or it's, uh, South, South Side Christian Church. So for additional information, feel free to reach out to my office. I'm happy to provide any additional information, but, um, I love to be able to announce when we're having a job there and hiring people in the city of Inglewood, so, um, I hope a lot of our residents get out there and participate in that. And lastly, I too want to say congratulations to Kathy. We're gonna miss her so much. She's such a beautiful person, and I haven't had the opportunity of, of enjoying her friendship as long as everybody else. I've been here less than a year, but, um, just knowing her for even the short time that I had that opportunity has just been amazing, so, um, I wish her the very best. That's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Falk. Councilwoman Morales, District Three.
Likewise, just some more brief comments. You know, so many good things happening here in the city of Inglewood. Some were mentioned today, uh, and we'll see more here in the coming years, and, and, you know, whenever somebody retires, you know, they played such a big role in getting us to this point, you know, we talked about Kathy over at the library, some of my friends retiring, Sandra Scott, I believe, like forty years employee, Terry Bisby, same thing, and those are folks that, you know, played a role throughout all of these years that made us a community and just made everybody, uh, just feel so special, because, you know, we all have to get up in the morning and go to work, but it sure is nice to work with people you care about, and people make you feel good, so, uh, we'll miss that about Kathy and the rest of our friends, and, uh, you know, good luck. Uh, and for now, that's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, real quick, I, I want to go over measures I and, and H that are coming up on the ballot in November, because there are some people that are confused. One is a increase by one and a half percent in the transidoccy tax for hotels, and that puts us even with Beverly Hills, Santa Monica, Los Angeles, and it's a tax that's paid by people that stay in hotels. The other is a real estate transfer fee increase from fifty-five cents per thousand to, if you go to a property that sells for over one-point-one, say one-point-two million, to, um, a dollar seventy-five per thousand. The rate in Los Angeles, Santa Monica, Beverly Hills, Culver City, on and on and on, is four dollars and fifty cents per thousand. So even when we get to one-point-two million, we're still about one-third of what the other cities are. Um, to talk about that in real terms, if, if a property sold for one-point-two million, and we don't have many that are going for that yet that are single-family residences, this is mostly commercial multifamily, the tax levy would be twenty-two hundred dollars over the six-hundred-and-sixty dollars that is levied right now, about a fourteen-hundred-dollar increase. Now, if that was on a single-family residence, this would be after the owner had more than tripled the value of their property, cleared about eight-hundred-thousand dollars. And this fee can be negotiated to be paid by the buyer as well, but even if it wasn't paid by the buyer, it, if you had a house in Inglewood that's worth one-point-two million dollars, that means you had it for a while and you made a lot of money. So I want people to understand, this is not a property tax. It's a fee that's levied upon the sale of a property over one-point-one million. This would generate about three-point-five million a year, it's estimated, for the city, and then I'm gonna talk about the next thing. We're really working hard to prepare ourselves for the future as it pertains to traffic. We are working very hard to build a people mover that will connect with the Crenshaw Line at Florence and Market Street, and this is about a one-million-dollar project. I have, have heard people say, well, the, um, the venue should pay for it. Nothing could be more misguided. It's the responsibility of municipality to deal with its infrastructure. This is something that goes on public right away. This is something that will be in play three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year to deal with the blessings and riches that we have worked ourselves into, okay? This is our responsibility. It's not enough to say, oh, somebody else should pay for it. That's not what mature adults do. They handle their responsibilities, and the council is handling its responsibility. So you, really hard to tell people who've invested collectively just in purchase and building a facility, about five-point-eight billion for the SoFi Stadium, it'll be about one-point-eight billion for the, um, Intuit Dome. To tell people that have invested seven billion dollars, they could have invested anywhere. They could have put their teams anywhere. People would have loved that to happen, but what happens? We get all the ticket taxes, all the parking taxes, concession taxes, and that money goes to provide public safety, pave streets and roads, cut trees. Parks and recreation, programs for children, like the tennis program that the council instituted, uh, for, for underprivileged children. So this is the way mature government operates. We don't whine and say, oh, somebody else should pay, for some, it's our responsibility. We did it. We've made Inglewood what it is, and now we have to take the steps to make sure it's sustainable, because remember, every one of these projects in EIR was done, and the environmental impact report said, you got, you got plenty of capacity on your roadways. Well, we want to do better than that. We want to have the least impact for our residents as possible. We want to, Inglewood to be the most desirable location possible for people to come to because they know they can get in and out. So I want to address that straightforwardly. And with that, I'm gonna say Kathy farewell, but not goodbye, and we adjourn.